The planning commission meeting for November nineteenth to order. Chris, can you get a roll call, please?
Ms. Proper.
Here.
Mr. Giller.
Here.
Mr. Lees.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Garrett.
Here.
Ms. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. Fractor.
Here.
Great. Back, this is, are there any changes to the minutes last meeting? Everybody's happy?
Wait, tiny note, the very last comment. LGA needs to be a licensed architect. It was a question. So check if LGA needs to be a licensed architect to work on an historic building. Thank you. Okay.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
Chris?
There are no changes.
Right, as said, I'm going to open up the meeting to public comment on historic preservation issues that are not on the agenda this evening. As part of a certified local government, we are asked to take public comment on historic preservation issues in the community. With that, I will open the meeting to any public comment. Please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen or press nine if you're attending the meeting by phone and then press six to unmute yourself. Ellie, do we have anybody online?
Uh, we do not.
Anybody in the audience? Great. With that, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Are there any call-ups on the consent calendar?
I believe both items are.
We can go right to. Um, I guess we have the Copper Baron condo unit two conversion to employee housing. PL twenty twenty-four dash zero four two seven. Ellie?
Thank you. Um, before you tonight is a combined hearing for the Copper Baron condo unit to conversion to employee housing. Um, eh, the applicant proposes to convert a one thousand thirty-nine square foot commercial office unit into a two-bedroom, two-bath residential employee housing unit. Um, and this is located at two seventeen South Ridge Street. Um, it is part of the Adams Ridge development and is located just off of Main Street in the Ridge Street alley. Um, and the Copper Baron building itself contains three condominium units, um, two of which are commercial use currently and one of which is residential use. Um. For some background, the, um, on September tenth in tw- of this year, uh, the town council approved a development agreement um, with the property owner Craig Campbell, um, to transfer, um, one thousand thirty-nine square feet of density onto the property and exempt the project from restrictions, um, on transferring density into the historic district as well as, um, the, um, density, um, the negative points that it would have potentially received under policy three for density. Um, in exchange, the applicant is recording a restrictive covenant and agreement for the unit, um, to convert the unit to employee housing with a one hundred and ten percent area median income rental restriction. Um, to review the real, um, applicable policies. Um, for land use, the applicant is proposing to change the use of unit two from commercial, um, office use to a two-bedroom, two-bath, um, deed-restricted employee housing unit. Um, as the building is already mixed youth with an existing residential unit on the top floor, staff does not have any concerns. Um, for density, the Copper Baron building was originally constructed under the Adams Ridge master plan, which allowed a maximum density of one-to-one FAR regardless of use. Um, but that master plan has since expired and the property is thus subject to the town's land use guidelines and development code. Um, as such, the development agreement was negotiated and agreed upon with the town council. Um, to exempt the property despite being over-density per the, per the lugs. Um, and so staff has no concerns. Um, in regards to parking for the site, the property is within the parking service area. And, um, office use has a higher, um, parking requirement of one point four spaces for every one thousand square feet as opposed to residential, which requires one point one spaces per thousand square feet. And it's as thus the conversion is not an increase in parking, so staff does not have any concerns. Um, and then in regards to social community, the applicant is proposing to do several window changes on each elevation, um, of the structure. So for the east elevation, um, the applicant promos- proposes to remove two double-hung windows shown on the right in red and then add two smaller transom windows in their place. Um, on the west elevation, the applicant proposes to, um, remove one double-hung window in the middle of a set of three and reduce the height, um, of two windows, uh, shown here. On the north elevation, the applicant proposes to remove, um, one casement window right here. Um, and then on the south elevation, the applicant proposes to remove a set of two casement windows here. Um, staff evaluated, um, these changes against our, um, design standards. Um, and looking specifically at design standard ninety-one in regards to, um, building components that are similar to those used historically. Um, staff does not have any concerns as there are existing, um, smaller casement windows, um, located within the historic district. And, um, all of the window replacements will be, um, from double-hungs to casements will be with simulated divided lights, which you can see an example of here. Um, so they will reflect the historic double-hung look of the area. Um, in regards to design standard one sixty-eight and priority design standard ninety-five regarding, um, proportions and sizing of windows. Um, staff finds the windows in the existing building match double-hungs encasements found, um, historically in the area, um, and do not have any concerns with the replacements, especially with the new windows proposed on the east elevation of the two smaller transom windows. Um, as they, um, were used historically and the neighboring buildings of two oh three and two oh five South Ridge Street have an example of the smaller transom windows. Um, in regards to priority design standard ninety-six in terms of solid to void ratio. Um, staff does not have any concerns with the windows being removed nor the windows being added. Um, as the overall void space for the building will be reduced to better match historic residences in the area as this building currently has, um, quite a bit of void space, um, so it'll be reducing it um, to be more similar with other historic residences in the area. Um. And the, um, after evaluating the project against all of the relative and absolute policies, um, staff has found them all to be met and does not recommend any positive or negative points and recommends approval of the project.
Thank you, Ellie. Any questions for staff? Alan?
Um, I'm all set. Great report. Thanks.
I've, I've kind of a question because I was looking at the code under nine one seventeen dash twelve talks about transfer of density. And it talks, says in there, in no case may a density transfer be allowed into the historic district or land use district one. So I'm confused why we're, can you do a transfer because it's an agreement or is that how we're getting around that?
Yes, so as part of the development agreement, um, that particular policy was waived, um, which is allowing the density transfer into the historic district.
Okay, so it's part of the agreement between the town council on that. Alright.
A development agreement is kind of, can wave the magic wand, so to speak. For certain policies, it's really the only way to get relief from something like that where otherwise, you know, it's an absolute policy. And that's really an exchange for some other type of community benefit. In this case, the community benefit being that the applicant is the deed-restrictest unit, um, in perpetuity to be used for workforce housing.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
I do not have any comments or questions.
No questions.
Mike? Under windows and all the red boxes, what is the initial S D L?
Um, simulated divided lights. Mm-hmm.
Mark?
Question for Chris, the comment you just made about the development agreement. Was that the only consideration, um, that was required for the density, um, to get the deed restriction?
Yeah, that was, that was the, basically the community, uh, benefit. I mean, I think that also the council considered the fact that the actual square footage of the building is not changing in any way. So it's, it's a little bit different than say if you had a vacant lot in the historic district or even a, a building that was already constructed and you're putting a large addition on, which would maybe further, further negatively impact, um, the neighborhood. I think that would be something that the council probably wouldn't be supportive, but since this is the same amount of square footage and it's really kind of a, a technicality that, you know, it was developed on our previous master plan and now it's over-density. And with this change, uh, in this land use district where commercial density is incentivized more than residential that it needs a, um, density transfer to kind of make it whole for the conversion from commercial to, um, residential. So I think that, that also plays a big factor in them agreeing to it versus actually having new, um, square footage being constructed.
And there's no financial consideration that was exchanged?
No, well, sort of. The, as part of the agreement, the development agreement application and development permit application fees were waived as well as the building permit application fees. Um, so the only fees that the applicant will still have to pay is for water plant investment fees. Um, and then there is precedent for this density transfer and conversion use or conversion process um, within the same Adams Ridge subdivision for another unit in a different building that was also converted from commercial space to a deed-restricted residential unit.
So maybe the one thing to add though is the council did add another requirement and that's, um, because on the one Ellie was just mentioning, it was just a deed restriction that was based on, you know, someone works in town thirty hours a week. They also added that hundred ten percent AMI rental cap, which includes utilities. So that was the additional thing the council, um, kind of requested and the applicant agreed to.
Yeah, and really in negotiating it, Mr. Campbell could probably speak to this more. Um, but there really was some, I think, give and take in terms of, you know, Craig kind of lined out what the cost would be to, you know, convert the space into, you know, livable. And so I think some of that was factored in in terms of the, the type of deed restriction and everything. So I think there was, there was, um, essentially a compromise where, to Mark's point, it was a higher level deed restriction than the previous one. But I think Mr. Campbell pointed out that it does take a bit of money to do the conversion and make the, make this livable. And he could, if he had more questions, he could probably, uh, speak to that a little bit more.
No, it's kind of getting to what I was, um, asking because between the water fee and the cost of the renovation, the owner has considerable expense and ends up with a deed-restricted unit that has a rental cap. So just trying to understand all the pluses and minuses there that went into that agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. Um, good presentation. I have no questions. The applicant, Mr. Campbell? Hello?
No. It's official, Craig.
Very official. For the record, Craig Campbell. Question for hearing my case. Um, there's really not much that I can add except I'm a twenty-five-year resident of Breckenridge. Um, I guess it's probably not super relevant, but I'll, I will say that I'm going to be occupying this, this, uh, this property. It'll be my primary residence, uh, following divorce. So, um, it's, it's pretty near and dear to my heart. It's not like I'm doing this for, um, uh, financial gain. It's frankly, it's the most reasonable approach I have to getting, uh, a residence in the town of Breckenridge. If this deal wasn't going to happen, I'm not sure that I'd be able to afford to live here anymore, which is a really scary proposition. And with that, I don't really have much else to add. I, I appreciate the commission considering the change to, um, casement windows from some of the, there's a tremendous mix already on this property. I want to say it's about fifty-fifty, uh, double-hungs to casements. And, uh, I just so happen to be in the window business, so I know a little bit about it. But the, the casements in essence just perform significantly better, particularly for air infiltration. Um, and that was sort of the motivating factor to, to us desiring to do that and then mimicking a double-hung look. Um, I think I'm going to, um, sadly, due to my age, um, I'm going to be adding an oxygen system into the primary, uh, bedroom. And so that kind of led down that thought path of we need to make it as airtight as possible, as efficient as possible. Um, so, you know, I'm going to be doing a number of sort of energy improvements into the unit two space as well as new windows in one, unit one and two and possibly three. We're trying to get unit three onboard with the window replacement as well, which would be, you know, a big energy improvement as well. Um, and that's about all I have. Does any, any questions for me?
Thank you, Craig.
Mark, any questions for?
Questions, Craig. Thank you.
You bet. It's good to see you, Mark.
Good to see you.
So Craig, can you confirm that all the simulated divided lights, um, replicate a double-hung look? Is it just one molyne across the middle?
It is, yeah, and it's a two-inch bar is what I'm proposing. So it's two inches wide, which is pretty close to what that, that center, um, sash line would be. It's about two, maybe two and a half inches.
Lock rail.
Yeah, the lock rail, exactly. Um, that, so that, again, from a distance, it's hard to tell. Now, when you walk up to the window, obviously you see that it's, that it's a simulated divided light bar. It is, on the exterior, it's a metal piece, uh, that's applied to the glass and then there's a shadow bar in between. And then on the inside, it's wood, so it does a nice job of, of breaking the glass up.
Um, okay.
Yeah.
And then, um, same question for the casements on either side of the door. They're obviously taller and narrower.
Um, the side lights at the door?
Yes.
So I would probably propose that those would be, I, I currently, those are just picture windows. Now, oh, which, show me which one we're talking about.
It's on.
On the south elevation.
South elevation?
Bottom right, but the red isn't on.
Oh, sorry, I'm on the wrong page.
The red notes.
There we go.
Yeah.
Yeah, so on the south elevation, uh, okay, west elevation.
To the right.
Get there.
So. Unit two is the one up the stairs, obviously. Um, those will actually be side lights is what I would propose because they're currently, they're, they're designed as shown there. Their, their windows molded to, to that door directly. So I would, uh, propose that those would actually be side lights and in essence, very similar look to what's there now.
Fixed, not casements, but what about the molyne and the appearance?
The appearance would be, um, very, very similar to, to what's existing. Um, if they were side lights, they would come all the way down to the bottom, the sill of the door.
Right.
And I would suggest that that's probably a better application for that location.
Um, and so will you put one single, um, S D L across the middle of that?
Likely I wouldn't unless you, and I mean, I'm, I'm not married to it. If you guys, if that's a look that you want.
I'm not married either, but that's what your note says. I think it's too narrow.
Actually say that?
Yeah.
So, does the note say that on there? For the side lights?
Play metal, Mark.
I could read it if.
I think for the unit one on the left, it does say to match existing double-hung proportions. I don't believe those are currently double-hung.
This is Mark Proino. Um, that is a, um, a drafting error that, that we're not proposing changing the existing, um, fixed side lights at those entry doors to, we're just going to replace them with, with same. The, yeah.
For a good project manager that actually reads these things, so you're, you're hired.
Uh, that helps. I, my concern was that you're consistent with how you apply the S D L. And it appears that if you make that correction, you're happy.
So I think our thought would be is that certainly anywhere where there's a current double-hung that we're replacing, we would have the S D Ls there. And.
Okay.
I, I would really defer. Yeah, yeah.
Just come up. All the small, um, existing, um, awnings or, or casements, whatever they may be, um, aren't the right proportion for a double-hung. And, and, um, so double-hung, I think, would not be the right move.
Um, and then I actually have a, a, a follow-up question for staff. Is that okay now or should we just finish with Craig?
I think, I think again, uh, under the same kind of line of questioning, it's probably good to just.
Okay. I just want some assurance that we're allowing casements in the historic district, albeit a contemporary building and that we're definitive enough about it that, um, someone couldn't try and use casements in an historic house.
Yeah, well, as the, the handbook's written, it doesn't speak to the operation of windows. And that's, we've run into that a couple of times on nonhistoric properties where people have, uh, replaced it. And, and so they are technically permitted. We really rely on the style, the visual style and the proportions when we're reviewing the windows. I think in this one too, for the reasons that they stated, you know, there is a, an energy, um, benefit. But really more importantly, we're looking at the character and also that it's a, not a highly visible building that already has kind of a hodgepodge of different window types. So it's a, it's a little bit harder to apply, you know, the, the design standards to an existing non-conforming building. And I think to one of the points either, um, Mr. Campbell or Mr. Proino brought up that they're, they're not really changing the proportions. If there is a double-hung there, they're replacing with a, a window, um, of a similar style. So we, we definitely at a staff level and really with applicants, we did have a fairly lengthy discuss. It's really about the only thing, a substance that we had after the development agreement that we, you know, spent a lot of time discussing and, you know, obviously with the concern for precedent and everything else. But we do know that there have been other casement windows of the right proportions approved in the historic district. Un, un, non-his-.
Nonhistoric buildings.
Unnonhistoric buildings.
Um, alright, that matches my understanding and thank you, Chris.
I wanted to ask something on that. So when you open a casement window, it looks very different than a double-hung. Have you guys considered that, like in the summer when windows are all open, especially on highly visible?
We have and probably a lot, again, less of concern with this one, but actually reading the handbook, it, it does not speak to the operation of the windows. It really speaks to the character and size. And so in, say like another example of where they were, um, installed on a home and is much more visible. Um, and we, we're not really excited that they were installed in that location. The applicant and their, um, designer did push back and say, you need to basically show me in the code where it says that, you know, where we have a standard that relates to operations. So, um, that, I guess that's, that's food for thought for the commission, but when push came to shove, we had to back down. It's something that we're, when we're working with people in those locations, we're really trying to steer them towards to like a more classically um, operating window for that reason. Because, I mean, most of the year where they're not open, it reads pretty well from the street. But let's say in, in June or July when they're open, it does maybe look a little bit weird if you have a house that otherwise is very uh, well proportioned for the district and then you have windows kind of tilted open. But, um, again, since the, the code doesn't address that or the handbook doesn't address that. And also it is a nonhistoric building in a, a very non-visible location off the alley. We're generally, let's say, comfortable and supportive of, um, the windows as proposed on this application.
Susan, you have any questions for the applicant?
No questions.
Matt, any questions?
I do not.
Elaine, any further?
Questions.
Alan?
Nice project.
Thank you, Alan. Good to see you. Thank you.
Okay, since, um, this is a open meeting, is there anybody in the, online with any questions? No?
No.
Alright, well, we'll close. We'll close this me, um, section of the meeting.
Public comment.
Oh, yeah. I, I asked for a public comment.
Yeah, I'm just clarifying, um, that, that's what we were doing.
Yeah. Okay. Um, any final comments from commissioners? Mark?
None. Nice, nice project. Uh, nice, uh, nice floor plan, Mark.
Uh, uh, nice project. I support it. Um, clarify the side lights or are not. Um, do not have S D Ls.
Correct.
Then?
That's it, I'm sorry.
Any comments, Susan?
No.
Matt, any comments?
No, no comment.
No comments.
Huh?
I'm sorry.
Alright, I, I don't have any comments either. Just have to say there's a great-looking project and looking forward to seeing it. Good luck with it. Craig?
Izzy, you want to go?
Um. Yes, I guess then we don't need a motion for that one. I'm.
Got it. Uh, Chair, I, uh, uh, move to approve the Copper Baron condo unit to conversion to employee housing, uh, PL two oh two four zero four two seven, located at two seventeen South Ridge Street with the attached findings and conditions of approval. And.
Alright, roll call, please.
Uh, Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Proper?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Lees?
Approve.
Mr. Fractor?
Yes.
Mr. Giller?
Yes.
Alright, motion passes seven zero.
Yeah, they're that guys. Alright, next up. Okay, I missed that note. Next up, we have Village at Breckinridge Plaza, large vendor cart renewal. Uh, PL two oh two four zero four five nine, Mr. Cross.
Good evening, Commission. Um, for the record, Cliff Cross Planner Two. Um, this evening I do have a large vendor cart renewal, um, at the Village at Breckinridge Plaza. Um, this evening I do have a large vendor cart renewal um, at the Village of Breckenridge Plaza. Um, the cart currently is the Hungry Dog. Um, they've been in existence um, since twenty twenty one. And this is basically going to renew that permit for another three years. Um, there are no significant changes with this application. That's it.
Okay.
Temples?
Uh, you can reach out to Brad Summers.
I don't know these food carts. We should get samples.
It's my order.
Questions for Cliff, Alan?
No, I asked my question. I'm satisfied.
Elaine, any questions? Matt, I have no questions. Susan?
Um, Cliff, I was just a little confused by um, the report. Um, so this is an existing vendor cart because the pictures lower down showed um, a new one. And I wasn't sure if they were replacing it or um, what was happening.
Um, so just as of ease of use, uh, we uh, utilized the same packet from the original approval for this. Um, so the images in the lower part um, or kind of the cart before it was established. Um, I guess another clarification is that the Hungry Dog cart only operates in the winter time. Um, kind of picking up on that skier traffic. Um, so you may not see it year round at the village. But yes, it is existing.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, but the wheels are covered and the hitch is covered, all of that kind of stuff.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike, any questions?
None, thank you.
Mark, any questions?
No, pretty straightforward.
Okay, um. We'll open up to any public questions. Uh, if you're online, you can press nine and then six to unmute yourself. Is there anybody out there?
No one online.
Right, well, is a, well, I guess I didn't ask if the applicant was present. The applicant present?
No.
Hey, we can move on. Um, any further comments by the? Stat by commissioners? No? We have a motion?
I'll move um, I'll move approval of the Village at Breckenridge Large Vendor Cart Renewal. Um, P L twenty twenty four zero four five nine, located at six fifty five South Park Avenue. With the attached finding and conditions.
Do we have a second? We did a roll call, please.
Mr. Elise.
Prove.
Mr. Geller.
Yes.
Ms. Proper.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Ms. Gort. Mr. Fractor.
Yes.
All right, great. Mark? Council update?
Great to see all of you in person. Wow.
Yeah, we're all here.
It's been a while. Yeah, really. It's been in time to get a picture. Didn't we try to do that this summer and it just never worked out? Uh, anyway.
I know you were waiting till I wasn't the chairman. You could go ahead.
Yes, we were, we were.
Get the photos now.
Yes, it's true, Mark.
And I don't take it personally, it's fine.
The council got a presentation on micro transit and that's um, where you have like little van service to pick up people that aren't near a regular bus line. And um, example is like I live in Silver Shekel, I'm a mi- I'm about a mile from the bus stop down there on Highway nine. And so um, what these type of services would do would be you you call them or, you know, contact them on an app. They come pick you up at your house and they bring you down to the nearest bus stop. And um, they've been employed in a number of mountain communities. And um, I think Park City was one of the examples that was being shown. But anyway, um, yeah, um, I think the council is interested in moving forward with that. And there's just going to be more to come on that. So um, another thing, the food and beverage delivery system is up and operating now. It's been the first week of operation now. You guys approved that a number of months ago out there on the city market lot, on the Parkway Center there in South End, as you've seen it up. And uh, um, anyway, so um, yeah, it's great. And they've got um, they've got a number of the vendors, including Cisco, participating. So um, good start to that. So um, anyway, but just a weekend, so still really early in the process. Um, let's see, we had a county update on countywide wildfire mitigation. Cliff, do you want to maybe just give a few highlights?
Hello, okay. So annually, um, we do provide an update to town council on just wildfire mitigation efforts throughout the entire county. Um, so we did have um, staff from planning and open space, red, white and blue, Colorado Forest Service, as well as um, U S Forest Service. So we had kind of uh, all community partners represented. Um, there are quite a few projects that are um, finishing up or finished up. Um, specifically within the town of Breckenridge, I think it was around like a hundred and something different properties. Um, if you remember, there was the um, Highlands Golf Course H O A that included about seventy five. Um, so that is the majority of them, but about sixty others are scattered around town, um, implementing defensible space and kind of removing those trees. Um, other major projects, you might have got an email or a text message. There's uh, two burning sites happening, one over in Keystone, one over here in Breckenridge. Um, I think the um, one in Breckenridge is being managed by the county. Um, so there are pushing out some messaging on social media. Um, other major projects, Blue River West finished up this past summer and they're just going to start Blue River East. Um, that does include some of the parcels that the town owns as open space. Um, other than that, there's a massive pile on the Airport Road up kind of behind the Avalanche Condo Centers. Um, we're hoping that we'll be able to burn that this winter. Um, and that will be guided by Alex Statch in our Open Space Division. Um, he just got his Burn Boss certification last year, so I think he's pretty excited about burning that. Um, definitely, if you'll have any questions about um, defensible space efforts, I'm happy to answer anything.
I think the bacon load, they actually started burning today. At least that was a plan as of yesterday was to get get that going. The conditions were right for it. Well, thanks, Cliff. Um, the council talked about the runway development on Block eleven. Um, and they're generally comfortable with the layout that that was shown. They would like to have, look at some of the town homes that have been proposed. We're looking at about a hundred and fifty units. And they'd like to look at um, taking some of the town homes and converting those to duplexes. So that's one thing that's been discussed. Um, let's see, what else did they talk about? Um, possibly a few market units to pay for the project. I don't think they're going to do that. I think most of them decided that um, they preferred not to have any market rate units on the project. Um, and then on McCain Parking. As you recall, this came up a a couple of meetings ago. Um, the council has decided that they do plan to move the overflow parking that's on next to runway to McCain. And um, they've done some things to mitigate it, make it smaller in size, three hundred and fifty cars. Um, instead of five hundred is what they're proposing. Um, and they've moved it away from the um, dredge piles, which was a concern of Breck history there along the highway there. Um, and um, they they've done some things in refining the plan to make it more acceptable. Um, wasn't unanimous with the council. There's still some concerns about that location. And they heard a lot from my neighborhood, Silver Shekel, because it's right on top of it, um, about the parking there. But the bottom line on the one thing I was telling someone earlier that um, there is concerns about, oh, there's going to be more traffic coming through the roundabout. All that traffic's already coming through the roundabout, it's just coming further into town and then going back out. So it's not going to increase a single car that goes through the roundabout. It's still, if they're coming from Denver or wherever else they're coming from, the north end of town, they're still going to go through the roundabout. And um, you know, either way, so um, but anyway, yeah, so.
Should um, I had sent in a note that they should um, consider making sure access can accommodate R Vs. Because the amount of RV parking in the summer, they take that, should I save that comment for when it comes before us?
Uh, you can send, you could, you could share that with them.
What, did I send it in already? Or do you know, did they discuss that?
They they brought it up briefly and they're not sh- yeah, there's, there was no final decision on that. There were some concerns, obviously Silver Shekel neighbors have concerns about that and what that's going to look like down there.
So we get a lot of tourists with R Vs and it's not like.
Yep, and there's people that are like, yeah, I need a place to put this while I'm here and.
Yeah.
That kind of thing, so um, yes, that's still on the table, it hasn't been decided. So. But yeah, that's pretty much a summary of the meeting from last week.
Right, you guys sent out all the letters, the dark sky letters. How much pushback have you gotten in response to this?
Um, not a lot of pushback. We've got a lot of calls and Ellie and Amelia and Julia can give you more information on that.
Yeah, um, we've sent out about a thousand letters so far, um, so we still have about five hundred still left to send out. Is that correct, Amelia? Yep, um, and so far, we've received about, um, we've had about sixty eight people contact us um, through the. Um, we have a lighting dedicated email and phone line, so we've had about sixty eight people reach out through that so far that are specifically from the letters. Um, but we keep on getting more every day, so that number is growing. Um, and it's been kind of a mix of people that are supportive and people that are um, a little confused or upset or not as supportive of the regulations.
Not a ton of pushback, but there are some people that are a little upset. We've been trying to remind them that we've had this on the book for essentially seventeen years. Um, and we're reaching out to you now, like nine months before, whatever it is, eight months before this goes into effect. So giving you plenty of forewarning on it, so. Yeah, and we even had a couple of our council members got letters, so.
Not to mention planning commission.
Yeah.
Were you on that list?
Oh, yeah.
Still may get one.
Letters of those that will be in violation.
Pictures from the right away of, you know, and not necessarily all violations, but an example of a violation on the property. So and in some cases, it's very simple to resolve. In other cases, it will require a full replacement of a fixture and that. And so um, but that's why we've got the hotline and everything. We're here to help on that and talk people through it.
Yep, the letters went out only to non compliant properties, but we did survey the entirety of town. So if people are curious and may have not received a letter yet or just want to know for sure, they can reach out to us and we can double check if they're compliant or not.
Or did you have to s-
Just the background of the seventeen years, the the timeframe of why it's so long from when it was adopted to come into compliance was based on the depreciation schedule. So if someone had just gotten new lights, like really the worst case scenario, that would like to have the full life in theory by depreciation to utilize that light before it had to be replaced. And really, any new construction after the time of adoption seventeen years ago, it was uh, the property was required to have uh, compliant lights. So there are some where maybe people didn't install after the fact, um, without a permit, that maybe will be caught um, to this. But uh, by and large, that was one of the, you know, however many councils ago when it was adopted, there was a concern that um. You know, people would, I guess, get the the full life out of their lights before they are forced in into being replaced.
Did you have to inspect at the daytime or night?
Uh, we did these inspections during the daytime, so we are mainly looking at the design of the fixture during that survey. Um, we may at some point during the future need to go out at night to look more at the bulbs. But our main focus currently is making sure all of the fixtures themselves are compliant.
Thank you.
So some of you might remember Meyer, he would, um, he was our summer intern here, curly hair guy. He uh, um, he did all that inventory, so that was his primary job while he was here. Is there a guidance document outlining what fixtures are allowed?
Um, we have um, information on kind of what a compliant fixture looks like on our exterior lighting information page, which is um, on the town website. And a really easy way to get to it is if you type in brekdarksky.com, it will take you directly there. We don't necessarily have a list of compliant fixtures. Um, but the town is, um, we're always available, like you can send us um, a cut sheet of the light fixture and we can help review it to make sure it's compliant. And we will hopefully have a database put together in the future of a list of compliant fixtures.
In one more plug, uh, is it next Monday?
Oh, yes, um, next Monday, we are doing a dark sky film event. We're going to be showing two dark sky films and have two speakers. Um, and you guys are all welcome to come. The doors open at five and the film starts at five thirty. Um, and there will be um, popcorn, sodas and giveaways.
Community center?
Uh, yeah, it's at the Eclipse Theater.
Yep.
So question about who is included in the regulation of compliance? Are the parcels that are Summit County um, parcels within Breckenridge required to be compliant? Or are they exempt because they're not at Breckenridge?
Not not in the county, just just town of Breck is all it applies to. It's outside of our boundaries. No.
So yeah, if there's an enclave kind of surrounded by the town that has been annexed, they would be only subject to the county's regulations and and not the towns.
One more question, um, what about the streetlights?
The streetlights are also being replaced as part of this. Um, the town is actively working on replacing them and I believe we just finished replacing all of the lights along Ski Hill. Um, the Providence light fixtures that you may have seen around town, it's all of the light fixtures along Airport Road are the compliant light fixtures that the. Um, that all of the streetlights around town are being replaced to. So we will no longer have the Wellsbach light fixtures that you see downtown in the historic district, um, once we finish our replacement. Um, I will say there are some streetlights um, in mostly in the Highlands that are owned by Excel. Um, and we are negotiating with Excel and are hopeful that Excel will also be replacing those to match.
So um, are the ones that we're going to be changing to going to provide the same safety?
Um, yes. If you drive along Airport Road, I believe those lights are pretty bright and um, provide just as much lighting necessary for safety um, as the Wellsbach fixtures do. Um, and you're welcome to go check it out for yourselves. And in some cases, brighter lights is not necessarily better. Um, so this can, we'll kind of work with that.
The the town's been using the new prob- what we're calling the new Providence fixtures, actually been in place for years. Um, it's on Wellington Road, um, along there, it's been along um, Park, parts of Park and Airport Road. Um, and then it replaced Ski Hill Road, which you noticed that, Mark. And then all the side streets.
Side, they've replaced it. They haven't come down the left hand.
Okay.
As you're going up.
It's a five year plan, although we might be done sooner, to replace all the streetlights in town.
So the ones on Wellington, for example, are.
Those were replaced um, replaced a couple of years ago, I think, yeah.
Are they all replaced? I'm trying to think, because I know like, towards the end of Wellington, as you're going towards Wellington neighborhood, that stretch. Uh, Jason Avista Point and Will Red has been the the Providence lights for some time now. But I know kind of coming up the hill for a long time.
If they were, I know whatever's new that's gone in recently has been the Providence. But if there's some non compliant, that hasn't been part of the replacement plan yet, um, of the retrofits. But I know that they did a bunch of them already, like previously to the dark sky efforts.
Do the streetlights, do they go off at any time at night or they on all like two AM to five AM kind of thing or?
They are on all night, I believe, um, but some of them do have dimmers installed. Um, so they'll go dim when there's not a motion detected and then will get brighter when there is motion. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure which ones have dimmers and which ones don't. That would be something the streets department could speak to.
Okay, any other issues or questions? No.
So they're still meeting the second.
Correct.
The third Tuesday of December.
Right, I think it's December second is our. December.
Okay. It's eighteen, we'll close this meeting.